We really appreciate the time all of you have taken either to join us remotely or to come all the way to Japan for this meeting. So, thank you very much. I will ask now if there are any declarations of conflict for the morning meeting. Seeing none, I think we're ready to move on. The next item would normally be the welcome for new chapters in SIG. As it turns out, we don't have any new chapters this time around, but the chapters do continue to make progress. We had 14 different chapter communities refresh their leadership during the last period, including the local chapter here in Japan. So, we look forward to continuing to work with the ongoing chapter leadership and to work with the new chapter leadership that's recently been seated. Our first speaker today will be Glenn Dean, representing the IETF Trust. Glenn?
Thanks, Ted. Do we have slides? So, I am the Chair of the IETF Trust. I decided to stick around next day to talk to you guys because I missed, I think, the last two meetings. I missed the one Victor filled in for me after London, and I think I missed the previous one because I was sick with COVID right after the IETF. So, I thought it'd be good to drop by and say hello. Next slide, please. So, there are five trustees. They have continued to be these five trustees since you last appointed. He was Victor from yourself supporting it. Stefan Wenger was just reappointed by the IETF ISG, and I myself was just reappointed by the IETF NonCom. We went through the process we do every March and selected our officers. I continue to be Chair, and Kathleen has volunteered and been selected to continue as Treasurer for another year. But those are our five trustees: Glenn Dean, Kathleen Moriarty, Joel Halpern, Stefan Wenger, and Victor Curset. Did I get the last name right properly? I've been practicing. I've been trying to get better. Okay, next slide, please. So, for those who don't know what the IETF Trust is, and that's completely fair because we tend to be pretty quiet, we hold the IP for the IETF and for other groups such as IANA and ICANN. And so, we protect those IP assets. We are not lawyers, but we pay lawyers some good money to help us and give us advice. But our job is to essentially manage these assets and protect them so they can continue, can be continued to be used by the IETF community and beyond without anybody else taking control of them and restricting their use. Next slide, please. So, since Victor last updated you after the IETF in London, we've been busy. We've renewed a couple trademarks. We renewed the IANA trademark in the United States. In fact, I just got an email from the lawyers this morning saying that that had been successfully accepted by the US Trademark Office. So, that one is officially done. We have also renewed the IETF trademark in Canada. And so, we have a series of these trademarks. They come up periodically around the world for renewal. And if anybody's paying attention, there is a trademark in New Zealand for the IETF that we have been trying now for pretty much about two years to get properly updated, and it has been a real interesting battle going, collecting signatures and getting them recognized and processed by the New Zealand Trademark Office. It's protected. It's registered. There's no problem there. We're just trying to make sure that we get the proper list of owners updated, and that's in process. And I'm really hoping this is the last set of information we have to send them before they finally do the update. So, if you've been paying attention to that, it's been a fun journey. In addition, we have updated our 2023 budget, approved it and published it. It's available on our website. If you care to go to the trustee website, it's right there, and I'll give you a glimpse of it in a minute. And then, we're going to talk a little bit about the restructuring we are undergoing from a Virginia Trust to a Delaware Corporation. We'll talk about that in a minute. Next slide, please. So, this is our budget for 2022-23 and the advice for 2024. What you're going to notice is that there's a real bump in the overall amount for between 2022 and 2023. Two things are going on in that budget. The first one is we're building a two-year reserve. The trust has historically and continues to operate with a very small budget compared to other organizations, especially when you consider the legal work we do. We have a very tiny budget. But we've decided to increase the background reserve that we hold up to a two-year mark so that in case anything goes bump in the night and we need to dip into that reserve, we have some funds immediately available. So, that was responsible for part of the bump. And the other part of the bump is that we are restructuring from a trust to a corporation, and that, of course, takes lawyers. And so, we're spending some money on lawyers and other conversion exercises to make sure we get that done right and that what's done doesn't have to be revisited for many years to come. Any questions on the budget while I'm here? This is where people usually have a question. Okay, moving on. Next slide, please. Finally, the restructuring update. So, this is a project we started off about a year and a half ago, and we've had been talking to the ISOC board trustees during the consultation we did with the community. We also held webinars. We did a lot of conversations with the broad community. And in general, we were very strongly supported in what we were going to do. The reason we're doing this restructuring is that, you know, when they set up the IETF Trust back in 2005, the trust structure made sense back then. But over time, especially in the United States, trusts have been used by some very clever lawyers to do things like generational wealth skipping and other things which attract a lot of legal attention in fighting among families. One of the results of that is that getting insurance for trustees is very difficult, and the trustees have been unable to increase the amount of insurance covered carried by the trust for the last several years. We believe we are currently underinsured and that there is a considerable liability being held personally by each of the trustees. The solution for this, one of them is to convert to a corporation which has different liability rules around its officers and will protect the trustees better while allowing the mission of the trust to continue without change. And so, that's what we're undergoing right now. Next slide, please. Ted?
Just a quick question. During the consultation that was done for this, obviously, in addition to the IETF IPR, you're holding the IANA marks. Was the ICANN community reaction to this essentially positive, neutral? What was the?
So, the actual community we serve for the IANA marks is the NROs, and we did reach out to the NROs and discuss with them, and we received positive feedback from all of them. That's who we have the contract with, is the actual NROs, is the actual contract for doing that work.
So, as I recall, the trust holds the marks for like the domain iana.org, right?
Correct.
And so, in general, the community that's involved is the broader community that shares access to the IANA. So, in the past, at least, there was a convened group of advisors to the trust. The name of which is escaping me.
CCWR, yeah.
So, the consultation went to them as well?
We broadcast out the consultation. The consultation we did was independent of the IETF. So, we didn't just do it at IETF meetings. We broadcast it out amongst all the community, and the people that came and gave us comments we listened to. I don't recall anybody from that specific group showing up and discussing with us. We did have representatives from the NRO organizations show up and make comments, but we did not hear anything direct, positive or negative from that other community. But we did broadcast pretty broad and wide. We made an attempt to overbroadcast so that word did get out.
Okay, so essentially it was neutral. Thank you.
So, and because there's a lot of concern about this, we've been taking it very slowly to get it right. And one of the things I want to point out is that the new bylaws for the new corporation are drafted against the original bylaws that the IETF Trust has been operating with. And we, while it's very tempting when you do something like this to go in and say, "Well, I know there's been problems, maybe someplace that I didn't like, and I'm going to take this opportunity when we have, you know, the cover off the bylaws to make some changes." We held ourselves to a higher standard than that and said, "No, we are going to do a conversion from what we have today, which is working, to a new set of bylaws which reflect those same things, but in the right terms for corporations, but without making any amendments or changes or trying to improve things." So, it's a one-for-one conversion we've done. And we've kept it very simple, and that, we hope, reflects the intention of the trust and the intention of the community. Since, again, the trust is working and nobody has come to us and said, "There's a problem with how the trust operates," that has not occurred prior to the consultation or after. So, one of the ones, we've maintained parity. So, where we're at right now, we have created the new corporation Delaware. It exists. It was created at the end of last year. There are no assets transferred over to it as yet. We are going through the process right now in the United States of getting its 501(c)(3) non-for-profit status recognized so that it has the same status that the current IETF Trust does, and it's paperwork and waiting for the IRS to respond. When that is done, we are then going to go back to the asset pool we have and work with the lawyers to make sure those assets are properly transferred over to the new trust corporation and the new corporation name that we applied originally to call it the IETF Trust Corporation. And originally, Delaware said, "That's fine. You've been using it for many years. That's fine. You can do it." When we actually did the registration of the corporation and filed the bylaws, they said, "Well, you can't call a corporation a trust. That's far too confusing. You have to have a new name." So, we came up with the lovely name, the IETF Intellectual Property Management Corporation. And if you're a bit of a tech nerd, you will recognize that it is the IETF IP Management Corporation as short. So, there's a bit of an Easter egg in the name. Anyhow, so that's where we're at right now. We're waiting for the IRS termination, and when that happens, we will begin the exercise. You can see, we're going to update the RFC via BCPs to reflect the names and the proper changeover. We're going to then do the IPR work for the moving the IETF contributions over to the new entity. The RFC copyrights on the existing RFCs will be moved over along with the trademarks for IETF, IANA, and others that we hold. The software licenses, code donations, and Yang catalog will also be transferred over to the new entity. And then, finally, we'll make a sweep through all of the other IPR assets and duties that the trust performs for the community and move those over as well so that hopefully by the end of 2023, the work of the current trust will be moved over to the new entity, and the old entity, the old trust, can be decommissioned and shut down. And as for the leadership, the leadership that just transfers over directly, the body's at a point, so a point. So, ISOC will be appointing one of the directors for the new corporation. It's Victor currently. The IETF NonCom will appoint three directors, which they already have, and the ISG will appoint one of the directors. So, essentially, what is today is what transfers over tomorrow. Their name's going to change from trustee to director.
So, I believe you and I chatted a little bit about changing the timing of that so that the appointments were made at similar times. Maybe you want to update the group?
Well, you and I did chat about that because historically, there's been a... This group appoints your appointee to the trust at a slightly different schedule. Normally, it's done at the beginning of each calendar year by the IETF, a year a little bit later. And since we hold officer elections, and we, in the past, we had to also do transfers of trademarks because a polarity in some laws and some jurisdictions is that trusts can't hold trademarks. So, in many places, you'll find that the individual trustees are the ones registered as the owners of the various trademarks. And so, whenever we got a new trustee, we had to go back and spend the time and the money with lawyers to file trademark ownership updates across the globe for all these assets. One of the things that actually is a big benefit of the corporation is that corporations, in fact, can own the trademarks. We won't have to do that in the future. And so, the need to synchronize, I think, has actually gone down. It's going to get better with this. And so, I'm going to step back and say, "Let's not worry about that anymore. I think it's all, we're all good and able to proceed," as the status quo. And that's my presentation. Does anybody have any questions about the corporation, about the budget, about what the trust does? Anybody want to talk about IPR idiosyncrasies? I will share one fun thing, one fun fact. I think history was made here at the IETF this week. I appeared yesterday at a technical working group, not a process working group, not any, you know, structural stuff. I appeared at a technical working group to talk about a technical change that the trust had wanted in an RFC. And I think that may be the first time the trust ever spoke and made a technical request of an IETF working group. So, history was made. It went really well. They were very supportive.
What could that have been? I've been kind of racking my brain here as you've been telling the story.
Turns out that there was a Yang module template that had been created and had been desired to be used by people creating Yang modules. And the way they had done the template didn't meet the IETF licensing provisions, rules, for how you mark that properly. So, we had to go back to them and say, "Your template can't be reused by people outside, and we've had a request from the IEEE to do a publication involving this." And so, either we have to write them a specialized license, which we don't like to do ever, or we need to actually correct how you've published your template.
Okay, so it is not a technical change. This was a...
Oh, give me that. Give me the history.
Well, I mean, I think if we were having the trust recommend technical changes, I would be like, "Oh, really?" So, yeah, that sounds fun.
And one of the things we're going to do as a follow-up is create some education modules for the IETF working groups so that they understand how to use the trust licensing provisions properly in the documentation they produce and publish so that they are licenseable and usable under the framework we've established. Okay, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming and sharing your report and wish you... All right, to take any finding if you like. Thank you again, and successful rest of your time here in Japan. The next report is from Cheryl London-Warr, from the Steering Committee of the Chapter Advisory Committee. Cheryl?
Thank you very much, and thank you to the Board of Trustees for offering us this opportunity on behalf of the Chapter Advisory Committee Steering Committee for a very brief and beginning-of-the-year update. So, I won't be taking too much of your time, of course. We have provided you with a very brief nuts-and-bolts mini-report, complete with an updated spelling, or actually typo error, where I had left a 2023 date instead of a 2022 date. And that outlines our structure and our activities up until now, as well as also outlines the dates for the future full chapter meetings that we, which we hold, in this case, four times in this coming year. We've recently held our first full Chapter Advisory Committee meeting earlier. I was going to say this month, but it's now last month, on the 21st, 22nd on my time zone. And we were a little disappointed with only about 41, 42 of the chapter representatives out of a possible 99 being in attendance. So, one of the things we're going to be undertaking is a proactive approach to reach out to all of those representatives as named by those chapters that have named them, of course, and unfortunately, that's not all of the chapters either. And just to remind them about the upcoming dates for the rest of the year and the value proposition that they have by being actively involved in the Chapter Advisory Council. We, as a Steering Committee, the nine-person Steering Committee, and whilst we were voted in the end of November last year and confirmed at the beginning of December, we didn't start our functional work until January, in fact, mid-January this calendar year. And on that very first meeting, which was a transition meeting from the previous Steering Committee, we had a three-person leadership team appointed with myself acting as Chair, Edemni from Nigeria as Vice Chair this year, and Heba from Egypt continuing in the role of Secretary for this year, forming that three-person team. What's important about what we're doing in this coming year is trying to open up more opportunities for discourse and interaction between the chapters by their representatives and ourselves as a Steering Committee. Whilst we meet monthly, and in fact, the leadership team of the Steering Committee meet twice monthly, one time with your staff to ensure that action items have been addressed, activities have been looked at, and the agendas are being set. We've opened up a couple of box notes whereby any chapter representative on the council can bring up at any time it becomes apparent to them that there's a topic, a matter of interest or a concern that needs to be addressed by us, and we're hoping that that will allow a more free flow of information between us all. Other than that, I guess I'm open for questions.
Please.
Hi, thank you. Is this working? Yeah, thank you, Cheryl. I was very happy to be at the, as an observer to the meeting, and I saw the interaction. I agree with you. The lack of participation of the chapters is noticeable. So, I think we should work more to bring people to contribute. I was very pleased to hear this question about the AMS, but I cannot see any responses in the box. So, I don't know what happened there, but the people complained, and they do not write down the complaints. So, we are running in darkness. Yes, so that's something that we really need to work in the communities. The other thing is this question you made about the threats on the internet, yes, which also I found a very interesting exercise. And I see more people participating, but what we may call the usual suspects, people that always participate. So, I need to work in, I think, we need people to get involved in ISOC. If we want ISOC to change, then we need people to get involved. Thank you very much.
Couldn't agree with you more. And one of the things I'm hoping that we might be able to do as we become more proactive, which is our intention this year, is also work with the regular regional meetings to restate some of the messaging and make some of that encouragement perhaps switch from intention to action, which would be very good for all of us.
Cheryl? Yeah, thanks. George here. Thanks for the presentation. I'm going to ask you to speculate on a couple of things and add whatever knowledge you have. One, why isn't there more participation? Did you get any reaction from the non-participants or from the marginal participants about why this was useful or not useful? And second, what areas of substance do you think are behind the concerns of the chapter that you'd like to bring to our attention? This doesn't have to be 100% certain, but can you speculate a little bit? Give us some guidance on what to be aware of. Thank you.
Certainly happy to do that, George. If you know me, I'm always happy to do it with a speculation as long as you don't hold it against me if I'm wrong. First of all, in terms of any sort of analysis, we haven't done the outreach yet. That is what we are about to do in this coming month, and I'd be delighted to report back to you on that at a later date when we actually have some facts to talk about. But one of the things that has become apparent is, in the past, we've had less opportunity for interaction actually taken up. So, there's been the intentions to run four interactions per year, and that has not necessarily been the case. So, I think there's a degree of complacency that has occurred amongst the representatives onto the Chapter Advisory Council, and we need to break through that complacency and set expectations that there will be regular opportunities for interaction and activity. So, part of the solution there will be to build in some value propositions for the chapters. And one of our little projects, for example, in this coming year is the development with any of those interested parties from the chapters for a set of good or best practices for election procedures, something that we trust will be useful across the board regardless of whether you're a very advanced democratically-based chapter or one that's struggling with the House and the weird twos for running a good and valued electoral process. And so, we're hoping that by actually giving some specific assistance that they see value in, we'll also see them have greater input into building more value for other chapters and other activities. In terms of the issues, we have a number of issues that are usually seen with relationship to things like how a chapter needs to be structured in terms of its ability to have, for example, bank, the nature and structure of its corporate or non-corporate identity and fitting in with the ISOC guidelines. There's still some friction points there. There is still some concerns, I suppose, about the existing membership system that we're working with, and there's a great deal of hope, certainly on some chapters, but that the transition to the new AMS system and a little bit more integration between the various platforms will solve some of those problems. But other than that, I think what we have seen is more input during the regularized, when they are regularized, regional meetings where if there is an open mic and less presentation, we may be able to hear and then start to act on some of these concerns rather than have them directly presented to us.
Charles?
Yes, well, it's Charles. Cheryl, thank you for your leadership and your contribution as always. I have a couple of questions. First, I do see a bit of confusion around some of the chapters about CEC and the regional AP, the regional, whether it be Asia or Europe, you know, the bureaus, and even some of the functional calls that are being organized from time to time by ISOC staff and so on. So, chapters are sometimes very confused about which one is which. So, my question is, how do you deal with that? And do you have your, I mean, for CEC, I mean, do you have your own ways of reaching out to all the chapters? Because in one sense, or do you have to rely on staff and so on? But obviously, you do have to because they keep changing, right? The leadership and all that keep changing. The other question is, I do see that CEC has a very important role in bridging between the board and the chapters, right? That's probably among the main functions of the CEC. So, how do you see your CEC's relationship with the chapters being developed and also with the board? Are there areas that you believe that needs to be improved, particularly since this is a board meeting? You know, what do we have to do at the board level to be able to support the CEC better? And finally, do you see any particular geographical region that in your work you seem to get more support of or less participation from among all the different regions in the world? You know, Europe, Asia, Africa, and so on. Do you see some gaps in some of these geographical regions, for example? Yeah, those are my questions. Thanks.
Okay, thanks for that, Charles. If you don't mind, I might try and take those in reverse order. In terms of the diversity across the regional input and perhaps not even the regional import, that the less developed versus more, in inverted commas, developed economies, we see a disparity. But I haven't seen all the meetings for this year yet. So, this is a looking back, not on our current Chapter Advisory Council Steering Committee work, but rather looking back on what has happened previously. And in that, we see a good reaction and response in terms of presence and opportunity to share and raise concerns and bring forward opinion in coming out of Africa and far too much of the usual suspects coming out of Asia-Pac. So, we're not getting the full breadth that we could get out of Asia-Pac, at least in my very biased view, being part of that one, of course. Again, very much the usual suspects out of Europe and out of North America as well. And I guess that needs to be looked at as a relationship with the staffing in each of those regions and the actual Chapter Advisory Council representatives in each of those regions. For example, in the last year or two, we've had really excellent engagement out of Africa, and what that's done has, in fact, helped and assisted more voice being heard from that region. Now, that's a good thing. What we need to do is find ways of bringing all of those regions into more equity. Because after all, we want diversity, but we want balance. Because after all, we want diversity, but we want balance in that diversity as as well. So we don't want a disequity here. Um, some of that, in my view, um, can be done if we develop in this coming year and years coming after this one, um, a slightly closer working relationship between the regional officers and the regional staffing um, activities. Um, there's often a disconnect between um, any sort of uh, chapter advisory council activities. And our, you know, I'm moving back to one of your earlier questions, um, to reach out to our members is by um, directly um, by a email announced list that can be activated, obviously from staff, but certainly from our secretary or ourselves. Um, and going directly to the named chapter advisory committee council representative. So that really is our primary tool. Um, we probably could do far more in terms of reduction of confusion if we had more regularized recognition for purpose amongst what goes on in the regional um, interactions. There seems to be a good deal of duplication um, of of information that goes out. Um, and certainly I've attended a number of regional meetings and um, not heard, heard or hear of the chapter advisory council or what its purpose is. And as you certainly outlined, it is a very important purpose as a bridge between yourselves and the chapters. Did I miss anything, Charles?
Mohammed, you had a follow up question?
Yes, thank you Cheryl for uh, these comments and this information. Uh, firstly, I have a comment and then question. So I would be really interested, as you just mentioned, that you are uh, the steering committee is starting its term, and it would be interesting to see the uh, the strategy that you adopt to deal with the challenges that the steering CHAC faces. The question is that you mentioned there are about 99 chapter representatives. So I believe there are about 100 or 20s or so chapters. Uh, are there any strategies in work to motivate those chapters to send their representatives or nominate someone to participate in CHAC? What you are doing about that?
Certainly, well, one of the things, of course, the motivation, the highest degree of motivation for chapters to um, to ensure that they have a named uh, representative to the chapter's advisory council is of course that it contributes to their um, um, half yearly and yearly um, review. Um, and so, you know, one one does better um, in one's chapter review um, if one has dotted all the I's and crossed all the T's. Um, but that's clearly not working for 21% of our chapters. It is, I think, on the 20th, which was the last count, it was 122 chapters. So you're you're spot on in your numbers there. Um, and you know, 21% is far too high percentage. Um, now, obviously, if some of those chapters are entering to various stages of rejuvenation, um, that's part of the solution. But during that rejuvenation process with staff, the expectation will be um, that they will be um, naming a representative to the chapter advisory council. But what we've also got here is a a a period of time between the when the chapter advisory council was formed and the very good rationale for its formation and now, and the activities that went on in its early days and therefore the buy-in and interest that the chapters had in all of that activity. And after a little bit of a lull period, the potential for even new chapter advisory council representatives to not actually understand what the purpose is. And so an education program, an outreach program, a mechanism, in our case, we're going to select for individual literally emailing to the individuals named and getting those that are listed to engage as best they can or suggest replacement for themselves if they no longer able to take on the role. Um, and then in the second half of the year, look at trying to shift that 21% to a lower percentage of non-named representatives um, and linked to each chapter.
Are there any other comments? Okay, well, we really appreciate your joining us today and uh, both for the formal report and for the conversation afterwards. Thank you very much.
And thank you for taking the time for taking good a good interest in what I think is really important work that we're hopefully going to be doing together. Thank you and bye for now.
Uh, so the, just as a reminder to the the board, there are a couple of uh, reports that we received as written only. And there are a couple of elements of those that we probably want to pull out. Uh, from the OMAC, for example, uh, the conclusion of the 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 report is actually advice directly to the board. Uh, it's it's fairly short, so I'm just going to read it. Um, everyone has a role to play in the Internet survival. The OMAC acknowledges that the Internet Society is committed to working with its organization members so that the Internet can remain a resource for everyone. With this in mind, the OMAC would advise the Internet Society to engage more members in its outreach and advocacy efforts to build collaborative support in defending the Internet. Organization members are always interested in receiving insights on Internet policy and regulations that will enable them to make informed decisions for their organizations. Therefore, the Internet Society's timely reactions to Internet policy proposal and delivery of impact briefs continue to be well received by organization members. And finally, lastly, the OMAC suggests that the Internet Society enhances its communications around its project impacts to the public to maximize everyone's understanding and involvement in support of the advancement of the Internet. So that was direct advice to the board from OMAC. Um, for the IETF LLC, I'd like to draw your attention to the fiscal year operating budget on slide six. Um, a reminder that this is for fiscal year 2022, not the current year. Um, but as you can see, it was quite seriously uh, in the red. Although they 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 used yellow about half the time, it's really red. Um, there was a significant drop in online and onsite meeting registrations during that year. Um, and of course, also a significant drop in uh, investment. So the year-to-date variance was quite significant. We are already seeing some recovery there. Uh, the the uh, the numbers for uh, IETF 116 here were 1,000 onsite and 600 remote. So that's really bringing it back closer to what it was prior. Uh, so we are expecting uh, some recovery there, both on the investment side and and on this. Um, but but that is something that the this board ought to note. Uh, George?
Yeah, Ted, remind me, is the calendar year the fiscal year for IETF? So these are final, subject to audit, these are final numbers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that this, as as Andrew notes, is is actually part of our budget as well. So we need to to take take into account uh, when these occur. Uh, they have a separate reserve, and I believe they drew on that separate reserve, but it is something for us to keep keep in mind. Uh, from the IAB written report, I want to draw your attention to a couple of the statements. Uh, they, uh, the IB submitted comments to the FTC on the Trade Regulation Rule on Commercial Surveillance and Data Security. It also responded to the call for input from the UN Office of the High Commissioner for UN Rights on the relationship between human rights and technical standard-setting processes for new and emerging digital technologies. Uh, in general, uh, the the IB is is working on a number of issues that uh, other parts of ISOC are also working on. If you look at the workshops and workshop reports, the environment impact of Internet applications and systems was a workshop they held recently. And I believe that sustainability is a general question which has been raised by many parts of the organization. We had discussed in previous meetings possibly having uh, a joint meeting with the Internet Architecture Board. Uh, we weren't able to arrange that for this meeting, uh, just because we came to the conclusion that it was it was needed after many of the IB had already made their travel plans. Uh, however, I've chatted with Miria Kulden, who's the IB Chair, uh, and they would be more than happy to arrange that for the the next time we meet together, which will be in Prague. Uh, so they're very, very much willing to sit down and have a discussion about how some of the technical views they hold on these matters relates to the broader views of other parts of ISOC. It's just a something that we need to arrange as we get a little bit closer to the time. Uh, are there any other questions or comments on the written reports we received? Uh, Victor?
Oh, it's his work on, sure. True. Um, one of the things I did not ask Jace Jason LLC this time around when um, is one of the things we noticed, and it is what it is, COVID was a hard time to judge how many onsite attendees would have, they would have, how many would be remote? And we know there's a delta in terms of revenue from from those is um, I just wanted to make sure they weren't using potentially the Yokohama as a metric for what might be the next two meetings. For, I didn't get a chance to tell them, I'm not sure what the the bodies thoughts are. Because one is, we seem to have a lot of local attendees that came, which seemed to be out of the norm from what I gather. But and which was good, it was great to see a lot of local attendees. I just don't know if we're going to see that same uptick potentially in the in the in the next two venues, given that it's Prague and San Francisco.
So just not speaking for Jason, but historically, the ones held in Silicon Valley or near it have actually had a lot of local attendance, um, because it's trivial for people to get uh, the the travel budget to to drive up the 101, right? So um, it's a, it's a, it's unclear to me whether we'll actually see even a greater effect of that in San Francisco uh, before kind of returning to normal in Prague, where I think the that effect is somewhat lower. Uh, Barry?
Yeah, I guess this is barely, but it does pretty much the same thing. Japan and San Francisco seem to be the two big ones for huge amounts of local people who only come to those meetings. So.
Um, the other problem that they're facing isn't so much the um, the issue around how many people are coming in person, it's the increased costs. Um, it's very difficult now to get the kind of insurance we had in the past uh, that actually protected the IETF uh, during the pandemic. Though those contracts are are simply not available. And the 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 kinds of contracts that are being offered have much higher costs, both for the rooms and for some of the ancillary activities. So we we are basically looking with the rest of the industry that does conferences or workshops at uh, a new baseline for what it costs to put these things on. Um, and the IETF is going to have to to look at that. They've actually floated a a proposal already uh, for increasing the registration costs uh, that's meant in part to offset this. Um, but the other thing is that they're finding that more and more people aren't using the room blocks that have been set aside, but going for lower cost hotel, which are near to the venue because their own travel, each individual uh, or the travel department of their companies uh, is requiring them um, to use the the lowest cost available. And and that means that room block guarantees and other things that we've historically used to lower the costs of the registration fees are are not necessarily working anymore.
And I'll add that Jay has told me that often the hotels aren't even negotiating room blocks anymore. We have no room block here. That's, you know, we got a rate, but it wasn't a particularly good rate, and there's no requirement for the room block.
Yeah. Any other questions on any of the written reports we received? Okay, uh, the next person is the Japan chapter report. Um, so can we ask someone, please, take a take a seat and we'll be happy to hear your report?
Very good. Speaker setup next slide. First, you sit here.
Oh, okay, it works. So um, good morning, everybody. Uh, I'm very honored to be here uh, in the in the board meeting of ISOC Japan, I I in I ISOC. And I'm a vice chair from ISOC Japan chapter. And today I would like to introduce what kind of activities happen inside of our chapter. So uh, thank you so much for this opportunity. So on next slide, please. So I am Mariko Kobayashi. I am vice chair of ISOC Japan chapter, also our board member Y Project, which is a supporter sponsoring of IETF 116, uh, 116 this year. And currently I work for private sector. Uh, if you know, there is a company, Mercuri. Uh, we provide a C2C selling app for the the like, this is for the for consumer service. And I work for the research and recruitment team in that company. And I joined ISOC Japan chapter when I was an undergrad student. So it was several years ago. And um, but I am very happy to continue to involve in the Internet-related communities activity. And I love 70s and 90s music and playing board game. So that's why sometimes the over 60 years people will be my good friends. So if you're interested in the, like, I love the generations music, please talk to me. So next slide, please. So I'm not for sure how many people know about this fact, but in fact, ISOC Japan chapter is the, I think, first local chapter, right? Uh, it was launched in 1994. Uh, actually, I was born in that exact year in August 1994 was my my birthday, so please remember. And so this is the certificate of the the the, I think, certificate of the chapter at the moment. So next slide, please. Uh, sorry, I think you would like to take a picture.
You want to check if we have it?
I got it. Thank you. Thank you. And so ISOC Japan chapter was established in August 1994, which is my birthday. Uh, one of the first chapter, local chapter, I think, I think, when I introduced chapter system. And I think in the last year, or I think in the past several years, we had a gigabit chapter, uh, thanks to uh, the everybody and Japanese local communities. And currently, the number of ISOC Japan chapter members who vote is a 465. And the that also a Japan, uh, Japan Network Information Center provide a secretariat function with us. So and we, so basically, our activity is organize if organizing events of especially we focus on IETF-related activities. And also sometimes we translate IETF or ISOC-related materials into Japanese, because sometimes language will be the obstacle for local people in Japan. And so next slide, please. So uh, one of our chair doesn't want to, but doesn't want to provide the picture. Uh, so there's no picture of the our chair, Toshio. But the so basically, there are five officers, Toshio is chair and vice chair is me, Mariko, and program chair is Taiji, and treasurer is Tomohiro, and secretary is Leo. So uh, the um, I I think a few people joined the IETF meeting and also APNEG, Aprecom meeting too. So maybe you can find those people in some other event too. Next slide, please. And I would like to introduce the characteristic of our chapter. So firstly, our chapter is operated uh, based on totally voluntary manner. So we have uh, every officer and other program committee has uh, like nine, like 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM work. And after that, we will have events or we will have a uh, the bi-weekly meeting and so on. And we focus in because uh, there are high Internet, uh, high internet in Internet usage rate in Japan already. So our focus is uh, rather than development of the Internet, uh, we focus is more like Internet governance or Internet standard, open in open Internet standardized activity. And there are a lot of, there already a lot of existing internet ready community actively in Japan. So basically we collaborate with those existing organizations or communities to achieve ISOs mission. So next slide, please. So there are several committees and working groups in ISOC Japan chapter. One of them is program committee, program committees, we will of the plan or we will do planning or preparing the events for local communities. And others, a, the, the non-com system we had. And sometimes this is a temporal committee, but we have an internet hall of fame nominating committee. Because every year we will like to exploring if there is somebody for good, for, for good nomination in the, from Japan, Japanese community. And third one is internet standard promotion committee. This is this community, this committee focusing on ITF outreach activities. And other working group is we have the pub working group. This is we, we are making the flyers in Japanese and so on. And we also have the, the, the function probably with allergic structure in ICAN. The next slide, please. And as a, as a, as a member of ISOC, ISOC Japan chapter, we would like to introduce Tolu Takahashi. I think some of you already know that unfortunately he has passed away in the end of the last year. He was very dedicated person to developing the internet services in Japan. And also he was collaborate with the, the people outside of Japan to, like to invite, to introduce the, for example, the interlop system into interconference into Japan and so on. Thank you. So our next slide, please. So we also work on localization content. In the past, we translated a few materials, for example, keys and internet for the internet, the children safe online. And also the, there's, I think, accessibility rep issue paper published by ISOC. So we translated some of our committee members are just is interested in accessibility. So they translated the, the English material into Japanese material in Japanese, then introduced to local communities. Next slide, please. And one of the annual event, we have a internet community showcase. This is a, we organize an online, recently online event. But every spring, around April or May, we have an event to introduce internet related communities such as ISOC, ITF, network operators group, IGF and ICN and so on. And I think spring is a good moment for people who would be very open for finding, starting the new activities. Especially for, especially for younger people. So we organize this kind of event in every year, spring. Next slide, please. And we have a the event on the PIR. I, I think most of people will know about this issue. But there is a Dr. Isaki, who is a previously the board member of ISOC. And I think Akinori Maimura is also well-known person in this community. But we invited those people and we had a dialogue, dialogue with the local community about the, how do you think about P I O? And what kind, what kind of plan in the future and so on. Next slide, please. And we had, we also had, we also have a collaborate event with ICAN. They, they, they would like to introduce the encrypted DNS to Japanese community. So we collaborate together to organ, co-organize this event. And they introduced the encrypted DNS and also the identity technology, health indicators and so on. Next slide, please. And we also have a lot of other proper events, for example, WCCTPAC and TTC. TTC is a trade communication technology committee in, in Japan. So we sometimes organize the event with probably with those existing internet communities in Japan. So next slide, please. And recently, we, we would like to encourage more young people to participate internet or internet rated conferences or communities. So ISOC JP also puts efforts to encourage those people, like how to join local or global internet communities. Now, let's forget it, 20 to 30s or the 35 years old, the kind of the, the range of generation. And some of participants now work as a program committee member in ISOC Japan chapter. So I think it's a very good example how to encourage youth participation. And now he, they can, they, they are now one of the readership position in ISOC Japan chapter. So I think I'm one of the examples of that. But next slide, please. And this time we had a ITF in the past one years, I would like to introduce more IT rated activities. ISOC Japan chapter is very focusing on the ITF outreach activity in Japan. Firstly, we introduced the Slack workspace for local people. I think in the last week, there are more than 170 users in the Slack works, in our Slack workspace. So they can exchange opinion or if there's the, of the, the newcomers, they can ask for somebody or how can I participate this working group and so on. So I think this is very good to have community to exchanging the opinions and comments or questions. And every after ITF meeting, we organize update meeting. This is we organize event, we collaborate with JP Nick. Every after ITF meeting to share what kind of discussion happened in the ITF meeting. And another, and third one is we organize the, like the get together for Japanese community in ITF. This is before COVID. So like we get, we got together in the each restaurants. But the drink, the, I think past a few years, we organize a get together on Zoom or you, by using Zoom. And but you know, the, the time zone is a bit weird at the moment. So we had a get together online, but it's like, but 1pm or 2, I know, 1am or 2am. We had the kind of the meeting, social media meeting, it's weird, but everybody are getting, waking up to watch the working group meeting. So it was fine at the moment. So next slide, please. And in January, the end of January, we organized the one big event in Japan to introduce ITF. And the, in, as a result, more than, almost 140 participants joined our event. It was very successful. I think in this, in ITF Yokohama, like nearly 20% 20 percentage of participants was from, I think, Japan. So I, I, I'm very happy if our event contributed to encourage local people to participate in ITF meeting. But in the event, we introduced, of course, over overview of the idea, but it's ITF and so. And also we would like to introduce a bunch of ITF ready tools you need to remember, like data tracker, meet echo, Zerip. It is a bit complicated. So we would like to introduce those ITF tools for newcomers. And of course, we also introduced what is the benefit of IT participation for Japanese local communities. And we introduced the side meetings, social events. And we had one of Japanese NOC member in ITF. So he introduced how you can connect to the wifi in the venue and so on. So yes. So this, this event was very successful in a few months ago. The next slide, please. So I'm sorry for a very small take it. But the, so this is the related events happening in ISOC Japan chapter recently. For example, like the how to walk through the ITF was most recent one. And we have AGM meeting and ITF update meeting. And we had ISOC Japan chapter workshop on internet, internet related organization showcase and so on. The next slide, please. And we had a, so publicity activities, every, I think, every, yes, a few, a few times, like three or four times in a year, we publish the news, newsletter on, on ISOC Japan chapters activities. Before COVID, we, we had a physical flyers and we distribute in each event. But now we publish later as a digital newsletter. So next slide, please. So this is our future activities. So of course, after ITF 116, we will definitely have updating meeting because a lot of people participate ITF from Japan, Japanese community. So we would like to introduce, we would like to introduce and share what happened. Also, we would like to encourage their future participation too. And I think this in 2023 is a very important year for Japanese community. Because a lot of internet related, internet related conference will happen, ITF, APNEK, IGF. I think APNEK IGF both will happen in Kyoto in the same venue. But yes, we would like to introduce what is IGF and so on to the Japanese communities. And maybe we would like to encourage, especially for young people to read. For example, the, the, like the blogs probably unique like ISOC and so on. Because some young people, some Japanese young people has difficulties to, to see and check regular, regular, just to see and check those notices in English regularly. So we would like to have some, some events to introduce what kind, like how, how you can read those blog post in APNEK, right? I saw and so on. And of course, we will have, we will definitely have AGM every, every year at the end of the year, we have the AGM. So we will report what kind of activities happen and what is financial status and so on to local communities. So I think that's all, yes, that's, that's all from my side. So thank you so much for listening to my presentation. I'm happy to answer the question or if you have any comments. I think, I think you have.
You already have a bit of a queue. So I think we have Barry and then George and then Louise and then Sakarika. So and then Mohammed. So Barry, your story.
Hi, this is Barry Leba. Thank you Kobayashi-san for the report and for the work that your chapter does. I'm really excited to be coming back to Kyoto in October for IGF. Can you say a couple more words perhaps about what the chapter intends to do related to the IGF meeting?
Thank you. Please take a mask. I need to take rest a little bit. So, oh, sorry. So your question was a, the, the activities regarding IGF in, in Japan. So the, in fact, I'm, I collaborate with the, the, a lot of the organization ready to internet governance forum. And in, I think in November, in last year, we launched the IGF task force Japan, in Japan. So which is, so that task force is towards to IGF 2023. And actually, before that, the internet governance community is a bit divided into Japan. There are several related communities, but there was not a, any meetings to connecting those related organizations. So we launch the task force and we invite representative from each organization. So now we can sit in the same table and discussing what, what kind of activities will happen or what kind of workshop we will, we or what kind of, for example, like, I think IG, this year is the first time to organize IGF Asia-Pacific. So we also very excited to share the, what is a Asia-Pacific immediate, immediate issue and so on. So yeah, currently we have a the meeting once, once a month. And we also think, we are also thinking about to round some youth committee or something towards ITF, I don't know, IGF 2023. So yes, a lot of activities happening that what currently we are doing is like launching the youth committee. And also we, we would like to think about what kind of workshop, workshop, workshops or open session. What kind of topic will good for those sessions? And we will like encourage existing Japanese organization, private sector or university to, to submit those workshop proposal and so on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. George's next.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. First of all, thanks for a really nice presentation. This chapter looks really healthy. This is sort of a follow-on to Barry's question, but to, to, to what, a lot of your work is focused on ITF technical matters. To what extent do you see the chapter as equally being involved or should be involved in matters above the applications level, that is the political and the behavioral level of internet governance on the internet, things like disinformation and so on. Thank you.
Yes. So I think when we had a meeting with the ISOC headquarters, especially like ORAF mentioned about, oh, ISOC Japan chapter seems like very techy chapter in ISOC, in, in, compared with other chapters in ISOC. And I think in the past several years, our focus is a very tech, especially we, we focus in on technology related to internet infrastructure, infrastructure. But recently, especially a few young people, several young people are more interested in internet governance or pre-seal your related to technology. So I, I hope this year will be the important opportunity for us to encourage, to, to to, to encourage activities that like connect tech and non-tech people in our communities. And also we would like to encourage more tech people to participate IGF, not only ITF and so on. Thank you.
Thank you. Louise?
Thank you, Mariko. And congratulations for all these activities you are reporting. I always admire the Japanese chapter for their youth involvement in the, in the organization. And the, this brings me into, how you do it? How you bring young people to get so involved into ISOC? Do you feel that the origins of the ISOC chapter help to encourage people to participate? But it's amazing. I can say is one of the chapters in the world that involve more young people into ISOC activities. And they do not feel like in other chapters with barriers to get involved. And also the, in, in other theme, that's my question and my congratulation, my question. And the, well, I was involved in, 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 in organizing young people for IGF in Mexico in 2016. So I'm very happy to share ideas with you, how to get people involved in this. And congratulations again. It's really exciting to see all this energy flowing into ISOC is what I think we need in all, every chapter. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think it's, I hope we still have a little bit of time. So I, I think one of, so I think this, all of activities we had is not, not only thanks to ISOC communities, like it's thanks to a lot of other communities existing in Japan. So as I mentioned before, there are a lot of active internet community, like Japan Network Operators Group and JV Nick and other IGF rated activities happen in Japan. And what is our strength is we can always like collaborating to organize events. So if we, for example, if we organize some events, we can also outreach the, the several community or several stakeholders. Like, and for example, like not only private sectors, we can invite somebody from university, like professor or student from universities. And sometimes we collaborate with the, the Japanese government, for example, Ministry of Internet, Internet Affairs. And so, so yeah, and, and another, the characteristic of our community is a, we, I think, compared with other country, we have a, we have a good relationship with tech community. compared with other country, we have a, we have a good relationship with tech communities and uh governments. Like, because the Japanese governments have been always supported the multi-stakeholder or open global internet. I think this is very uh rare characteristic of governments, you know? So they, they always, they, and also a lot of, a lot of the professors from, from universities in Japan participate the, the government's council. So if something weird happened, they can shout out inside of the council and they will uh fix the direction of the ICT policy and so on. So I think uh the relationship between tech and non-tech will be one of the strengths. And uh, and another aspect is we have a lot of active existing organization and we can collaborate each other. So that, that, that will um makes, that, that will, that, that, that enable us to do those activities I shared in the previous slides.
Mohammed?
Uh, yes, I have to say that was a really impressive presentation, so thank you very much for that. Two questions. Uh, one, can you uh tell us a little bit about the challenges that your chapter face and what you are doing about those? Uh, second, uh, are there any activities with regards to person with disabilities? Uh, do you do, do you have any members or uh is chapter doing something about that? Thank you.
Uh, excuse me, I thank you so much. I see, can you repeat the first question again?
The challenges uh that your chapter may be facing or you think that you are facing and what you are trying to deal with those challenges.
Uh, Ja- Ja- Jenny?
Challenges.
Jenny, this.
Yes.
Issues. I said challenges, oh, got it. Challenges in our chapters comment, our chapters members.
Yes.
So um, I'm sorry, I, I, I still did not figure out the first question.
Are, are there any difficulties that the chapter might encounter in the near future? And what would you do about that?
Uh, in general, and second question is disability and activity, I got it, thank you. And so I think, so so Remy uh answered the first question, from the first question. So uh, the difficulties is a, so as I talked in the, the first or second slides, the ISOC Japan chapter is operated based on completely voluntary monitors. So sometimes the uh, we, they, they're difficult, like they're part, they're a, like limited capacity for us to organize something or collaborate with something. Because the, everybody has their main other job and it's very difficult, sometimes difficult to uh provide enough uh capacity uh with uh, with, when we collaborated with other organization to, to, to organize the event. But the, and currently, we, so, so I, ISOC Japan chapter is, has, does not has a um the, the, the regal entity yet. So that is currently one of the uh most uh, the, 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 the most challenging topic in our chapter. Like, in fact, we are preparing, uh, making the report, like, how can we make the ISOC Japan chapter into regal entity in Japan? Like, it's a bit uh difficult process in, in Japan. But if we had a, like, nonprofit organization, that kind of certificate, we can also use Slack for nonprofit organizations be laid and discounted so on, so. But uh we, we are still exploring about that point. So that's, that is my answer to your first question. And second question is um, they, they are definitely, uh, there are a few people in our program community are interested in the accessibility and disability. And I think a few years ago, we had a, an event to inviting one of the ISOC Japan, the ISOC Japan chapter member. Uh, he, he's a programmer, but also at the same time, he's blind. So he shares uh what is difficulties that happen and what is the issue in accessibility and the software development perspective and so on with our communities. But I think regarding disability in accessibilities, uh, there already a lot of active uh community existed in Japan, especially regarding the web developing communities. They are very uh doing great job regarding the, the disability and accessibility and so on. So we would like to collaborate those existing community to encourage the, the access, the diversity and inclusion related activities also in Japan, Japanese community.
Thank you, Sagurika.
Hello, I'm Sagurika. Congratulations to the Japan chapter, and I would like to ask two questions. One is like, I would just want to know, because in APAC, Asia-Pacific, there are many chapters who may be having thousand odd members. But being a early chapter, early founded chapter, you still have four hundred sixty-five members, kind of. So what is your strategy to getting members? Like, how do you get members? Do you have screening process kind of things like? And the, the second thing is uh like role model. I would like you to be nominated as a role model chapter for the APAC region. So what is your like collaboration decisions, like collaborative efforts with the other chapters in the region?
Hmm.
Thank you.
So a, so firstly, uh, we, we didn't have that much sophisticated process regarding calling for members to ISOC Japan chapter. But it, it's more like, when, when, when the officers or program committee members meet somebody who might be interested in the ISOC Japan chapter missions and some, the, the events, like, we, we just directly contacted or encountered that person and very encouraged, oh, please join our chapters and so on. And so, so in, in that kind of way, like, we, we were gradually, gradually encouraged the local participation in the, I, 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 ISOC uh Japan chapter and so on. And secondly, uh, towards IGF two thousand twenty-three, uh, the, we, we are, we started to have a conversation with the USIC in, you, 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 you studying group in ISOC Japan, uh, I, 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 ISOC Internet Society to, maybe we, we might have some collaboration regarding the youth development in IGF. So we, we had started to uh, the, the conversation. And I also had a conversation with Interplanetary Chapter in ISOC. I think they recently rounded the Internet Internet Chapter. It is very exciting project, I think. And they also emphasized the use, the opinion or, or comments from youth will be very important to developing the future Internet, Internet. So I would have if we can do something maybe in IGF, like to organize an open session together or something. And I think in, like, a few years ago, we had a um, the, the IGF Pacific Regional Readership Meeting or something. Like, we, we couldn't meet other chapters reader in person. So we had a, like, that, like, forty-four dialogue, dialogue discussion together. But recently, it turns out, it turns in online format. And it's a bit, I, I feel it's a bit difficult to uh know directly readership in, readership position in other chapters in Asia-Pacific. So if there, i- i- if I, I thought were are interested in the organized such readers, like, readership meeting in, in Asia-Pacific, like, as a, in per, the format in person. Um, I think that will very helpful to, to exploring opportunities to collaborating with other chapters in the same region.
Thank you, Charles.
Yes, uh, Mariko, thank you very much for your presentation and congratulations for the success and the continued success of the Japan chapter. I, I, I just actually echoing many of the things that were said by other trustees. Um, I, I, I do, I hope to encourage the Japan chapter to continue to share more about your experience and how you make the chapter work, like many of the factors that people talked about. You're very active, you are very strong, particularly on, on technical issues, working very closely with government as well as many of the internet-related organizations in Japan and internationally. So all these things, how do you do it? And also, and also uh, working very, very well with young people and so on. So uh, and continuity, you seem to have a very good uh continuity among your chapter and your people and so on. Uh, so how do you make it work? I think there are a lot of these experience that, that many other chapters will benefit from you. Uh, first, within the Asia region and then uh obviously all around the world as well. So I do want to encourage you to continue to find ways to doing that. And I think we've heard a few things about how, you know, some of the issues or suggestions that you might have talked about. Like, maybe there needs to be more face-to-face gatherings uh for the region and so on, that hasn't happened for some time. Uh, or, uh, but I also think that, you know, many of these issues that you face in Japan in terms of even the internet governance issues and the policy issues, data governance issues and so on. Uh, Japan actually can be a good example for many of the other countries in, first, in this region and then maybe the world. So uh more participation, not just in the ITGF, but of course IGF, because it's going to be in Kyoto. So, so that's convenient. But also uh within the APR IGF, I think you should have a lot more opportunities to share there more actively. So I, I, I just want to encourage you to, to do that. And maybe, you know, if there's anything that we can help to connect you better with other chapters. Uh, I think I, uh, the board and, and many of our trustees will be very happy to help you do that. Thank you.
Uh, thank you so much for your comments. And I, I, I appreciate your comments on, like, our, our challenging, challenging activities happen in ISOC and Japanese communities. And uh, I, I have one question for uh the ISOC board members. Like, do you have in, do you have any plans for a, do they have any plans for organizing some events or session, especially organized by ISOC in, in, in IGF in Kyoto?
Can you hear, is this on? Okay, uh, yes, so we are um, um, getting organized, just like you, um, um, for Kyoto. And we had some excellent meetings this week with um the Japanese government and a number of stakeholders in the, in the communities and with you about Kyoto. So we're quite excited about that. And yes, um, we are, are considering workshop proposals, um, considering, and certainly would want to do some coordination with the chapter on potential chapter activities that we could do together um, on the occasion of the IGF. Uh, so, so yes, we'll be there and active and, and would certainly want to keep the discussions that began this week going in preparation for the event.
Thank you. I, I, I think uh the, the kind of, the, the opportunity, if you have a, the, the, like, open session or workshop, especially by, especially organized by ISOC, would be good opportunity to exchanging the, the, the best practice from each chapter and so on. So I, I, I was thinking about that idea. But if you have any plans to organize in Kyoto, I'm always happy to hear about the details. If, if there is something corroborating, we can together, uh, we are always open about the options. So please let us know if you have any specific plans. And of course, if we have uh any uh workshop or like session planning in the future uh, and if I need, if we needed uh ISOC's help, uh, we will contact you. And so, thank, thank you so much. And I'm very happy to um, happy to have more opportunities to exchanging our best, best practice with, between the chapters, especially in Asia-Pacific.
Let me summarize the, the feelings of the board by saying, we really appreciated this, this presentation. There's a lot of great work going on in your chapter. And a lot of opportunity in the future. Uh, so we thank you very much for, for your time today and for all of the great work. And we look forward to continuing to work together, not just in the upcoming IGF in Kyoto, but from then on. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Uh, we're gonna take a short break now. Uh, there's, I believe, refreshments out in the hallway, um, for those who'd like to prepare. Uh, thanks already and welcome back. We, we thank uh, or our colleague Lars Egert for his report. Uh, we appreciate that. Uh, now we move into the committee reports, and the first committee report is from the election committee.
Thanks, Ted. Thanks, everybody. Well, as you know, we have a running election and the uh, has been a quite smooth process. Any process is far from perfect, but the uh, we have some minor issues I'm going to point out. But the uh, well, the, uh, just to make a review, uh, last nine, twenty-nine of November, we started this process opened by the nominations committee. So now it's time for me to thank the nominations committee and all the colleagues at the uh, at the board that have participated in the nominations and the elections committee because of contributing to these encouraging results. Yes, also, I want to thank the staff and especially Lauren for their efforts to keep this process running as smooth as possible. Yeah, so we have less trouble to worry about. The um, so after these nominations, self-dominant individuals or other individuals nominating other people for chapters and the organizational members, yes, the slates were announced by the fifteen of February. Uh, that's when the most of the important work by the nominations committee nearly finished. The um, then we had six, uh, six candidates for two seats on the um, for, for the chapter's constituency, let's say like that. And for the organizational members, we have uh one seat and we have then two candidates. After petitions, we raise one candidate on each side. So now we're talking about seven candidates running for two seats in the um, in the uh, chapter's uh election. And three seats on, uh, three candidates for one seat on the um, member, organizational members uh, uh, election, right? The um, I should say that we have uh, on the chapter side, a couple of candidates uh running for reelection, which are George and Mohammed, yes. And on the organizational side, we have Ted also uh seeking for reelection. The um, we have unfortunately only one woman on each side running for the um, as a candidate. So I think we should motivate women to participate more. We have discussed this a lot, the, the amount of women participating in the industry, which really needs to be improved in, in a global manner. Yeah, the um, seventeen of March, we opened the forum, yes, candidates forum. This year, uh, candidates forum has been less active than past two years, which I have seen, three, three years I have seen. And the uh, we are not sure, but there is no technical issue. It's something related, how people want to participate. And again, I see from the chapters, the chapter leaders, uh, less participation. But maybe it's just the time when people are coming out of, 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 of all the things we suffer from uh COVID nineteen pandemia. So they need to focus in other business and they need to keep things running up. So the uh, that may be held in people from um, participating in a more active way. Although we, we got some peaceful discussions in the, in the, in, especially in the uh, chapter selection uh list. Uh, there are still some technical issues on the list. There were some complaints which shouldn't be taken as a, as a problem. Uh, let's say on fairness or, or disparity because of the, there is some moderation. This moderation can be improved, but it needs to be moderated, yes. The uh, in an um, ambience like uh, I so, mainly least, you need moderation, yes. Because people sometimes abuse, that has happened in the past, um, yeah, it shouldn't go on. And the um, the, the other thing is, was a technical, minor technical issue, but the uh, that precluded the, the males to be um that precluded the the males to be um identified as uh valid. So it was solved. It was sorted out. And the uh so the today, well, first hour today, the members and the organizational members and election and chapter members uh list closed and the ballots were distribute distributed as uh already planned. This voting will be closing by the fourteen of April. Uh today, we have one hundred and twenty-two chapters eligible to be to vote and ninety organizational members to vote. Yes, uh about one hour ago, we had nine organizational members voting, that means ten percent. Yes, and twenty-three chapters voting, that's about eighteen percent. So it's it's uh it's coming. Uh after the voting closes by the fourteen of April, then they will be in this challenging period. Then uh we will know from Andrew if there there were challenges. And if so, how they were sorted out. Uh so the final results are announced on the fifth of May. And that's it. I'm happy for any questions you may have or comment. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments for Louise for the committee? Okay, Charles.
Yes, uh thank you. Uh I'm going to give very quickly the uh governance committee report and also uh using this opportunity to share with you a revised chapter and hopefully getting the approval of the board for that. Uh we had four meetings uh since October last year, so we pretty much had the two meetings, uh 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 no, uh one meeting every two months, so it's been pretty productive. So I want to thank the members of the committee, Victor Berry, Shabir and George Sakarika and of course Andrew uh for their participation and help. And also, of course, Lawrence, a very great support for the proceedings of the uh meetings and all the preparation and so on. So we basically uh handled a number of uh issues in these meetings. The first one was, you know, trying to figure out actually what our action plan is going to be uh for the year. So according to that, uh which we quickly agreed, uh first, we of course have to uh finalize the nomination committee guidelines, uh which we actually didn't make a lot of changes at all, because basically we were also very much present on time and the NOMCOM uh pretty much has been operating quite uh if uh efficiently anyway. So we quickly approved the guidelines for the NOMCOM, uh and we spent most of the time of the rest of the meetings on two main issues. Uh the first one is the uh governance committee charter, which I'll go back to, and also the uh board uh self-assessment uh which we conducted. And I'll go into uh a report of that later on in the in this meeting. So going back to the governance committee char- charter, we uh well, uh we reviewed and updated the charter to basically try to better reflect uh standard sector practices of NGOs, non non uh non-government uh organizations and so on. So uh we 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 noticed that the charter was actually last revised back in two thousand and seventeen, so it's been a while. And we know that uh sometimes some of these sector practices do change from time to time. So we want to take a holistic review of the practices uh based on some of the resources we get from both source, the company that we also use for our our uh board review uh to look at some of the other nonprofit governance uh uh non-governance uh organizations and how they are governing themselves. So we identified a number of areas that uh we need to take a look at, basically including uh board composition, board success, succession, uh planning, committee, composition and ongoing uh education. And these are some of the areas that were not previously reflected in our governance committee uh charter before. So uh we we so uh uh Lauren, can you show, should we show that uh on on the because I I think you can get it to it on the board. In fact, the uh the uh 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 the charter, revised chapter charter that we want to get your approval of. Uh so that, uh so I I guess uh trustees can go to that and look, go to the board uh source and look at that. Uh the uh the it seems like we have made a lot of changes, but actually most of it is basically uh just re- reorganizing some of the orders of the uh of the of the content. Uh and uh it 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 looks like it's been a lot of changes, but actually it's just a lot of reorganization. So it again, uh we we focused on possibly uh trying to include in the charter of the governance committee, some of these uh issues that we that I mentioned, like composition of the board, uh succession planning and uh and committee composition and education. But we also did not some include uh some of the practices that were uh that were uh that were, you know, uh that were refers to us as uh issues that we might want to take a look at, but we didn't include. For example, like recruitment effort, uh because we do have other processes in ISOC to handle that with our nomination committee and our election committee and so on. So we didn't want the governance committee to over to overlap with those.
So I actually have a question.
Yes.
Uh thanks very much for for taking this holistic view and and presenting this. I have to say, when I was reading uh the section on develop and maintain the board matrix charter reflects the various perspectives, experiences, skills, diversity, et cetera. This this new section of the uh governance committee charter, so in in the red line, there's no uh basically it's the part that starts board and composition, board and committee composition and succession planning and ends with identify, recruit and recommend candidates for board membership for the board-appointed trustees position. There's a good bit of that where um historically, the the ISOC board has delegated that to the nominations committee. And one of the consequences of that is the nominations committee cannot have anybody sitting on it who is a candidate. Uh the elections committee also cannot have anybody sitting on it as a candidate. And reading this, I I felt like that this was significant enough in terms of kind of setting the um the direction of the election, that I began to worry that we would also not have anybody able to sit on the governance committee uh who was a candidate. And that begins to be a bit of a problem, right? If we have three committees where um nobody who's up for reelection can sit, um we we kind of have a logistical problem in in spreading the the work of the board across uh some pretty important stuff. Um and so although this is, this is a proposal to change just one committee's charter, I think it does have some ramifications across the others. And we might want to to ask ourselves how much of this would would turn around and affect the composition of the governance committee or the other committees? Like if if this means that you could serve on the nominations committee while yourself a candidate, which seems unlikely, um or whether it would also have that other consequence, would be something I'd I'd appreciate some further discussion. It looks like Andrew wants to start.
Uh yeah, thanks. So um are you suggesting then that um that this board committee composition and succession planning is an important function, but actually it really ought to be the NOMCOM? Um because one, you know, an alternative would be to push this to the NOMCOM, but make the NOMCOM's job bigger and therefore it doesn't like have this sort of startup and ending kind of pattern that it has had historically.
So I definitely think that's one possibility here. The difficulty with that is the way we've currently got the nominations committee structured, a fair number of its members are not trustees. And that in turn would mean that developing and maintaining the board matrix would be more difficult because some of those those members would not necessarily have the same experience. So I think we it if it so I think our our options here are if if we're going to 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 do this inside the governance committee, uh then we have to consider whether the membership of the governance committee needs to be restricted. If we're not going to do this in the governance committee and do it in the nominations committee, whether that might have like a two-stage um membership, where uh it's during the the development of the uh of the board matrix, et cetera, it's board members. And then once that is complete, it seeks outside members. I think that would actually match this as an intent quite well, but it would mean that we actually need a different red line to a different committee.
Yeah, uh Ted and Andrew, thank you for that point, because I actually do not particularly recall that we discussed that particular issue. Maybe we didn't think about the membership issue of the governance committee and your point about, you know, not, you know, so many people will probably be excluded because of that. So we probably didn't uh consider that. So I think I want to hear more views from, you know, our committee members as well as other trustees on this particular issue. Uh what do you feel feel about the best way going forward? Because I I certainly am, you know, trying to facilitate this, but I'm not trying to make the decision on what's going to do, what we're going to do with this committee and this particular charter. So that was a point that we probably didn't consider. So one possibility like Ted was mentioning might be a two-stage membership type of a situation. Or maybe we would be thinking more about the governance committee setting up some of these directions and programs, but not directly involved in identifying and recommending uh particular candidates, but thinking about it at a high level uh to try to put into place programs with ice within ISOC and the board to try to uh expand the kind of uh uh you know, board diversity that we're trying to get at. Whether or not that would satisfy or or, you know, uh avoid the kind of conflict of interest that uh could possibly uh happen.
Uh so just to confirm my understanding, you're you're then thinking you would keep this as it is, except the bullet that's specific, identify, recruit and recommend candidates for board membership uh for the board-appointed trustee positions?
Possibly, if we need to change that wording a little bit, instead of directly saying that we are recruiting and recommending candidates, but uh identify, but but something like uh uh create the kind of strategies to help the organization to recruit, identify, or or maybe the NOMCOM specifically saying the NOMCOM uh to do delegating that particular uh 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 work uh in responsibility to the NOMCOM in this particular, I don't know whether or not, again, I don't know whether or not that is appropriate, though, for one committee to 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 mention another committee what they are trying to do. But uh but maybe talking more about ISOC in general, the governance committee would identify ways of uh for the organization to uh better or uh re- better identify ways of uh improving board direct diversity, saying saying it in such a way, rather than uh in in this particular way, it it sounds like we're actually directly identifying or recommending candidates.
So I saw Louise, Andrew and George in queue and Mohammed as well.
Yeah, yeah, mine is just uh the, I think it's complicated, but the uh the what they were discussing now, but the uh one of the things that we should take in mind is in in this election process, when we were trying to recruit members for the nomination committee and the elections committee, it was really complicated because there were no volunteers. Okay, so the uh the the uh it took longer in the organizational election uh to get volunteers to serve in the nominations committee and the elections committee, right? So the um so we need to take that into consideration. If volunteering is complicated, I cannot imagine when the you you want to appoint someone and you need to run a formal process of nominating, it's going to be eternal. Yeah, thank you.
Uh so the 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 list has grown and kind of thing. So John, I think you're next, then Andrew, although he may defer to Alona, then George, Mohammed and Laura.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm wondering how much the actual process we will engage for point uh board-appointed trustee positions, you know, will be a bespoke one every time, right? As opposed to something that we would formally delegate to something like the nominating committee. I think it 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 would be asynchronous with the processes that Louis and I are executing, right? In the sense of it, it doesn't have the same time dependencies, doesn't have the same candidate pull dependencies and things like it. And so, I mean, I I could certainly see there being a mandate for the governance committee to help articulate what that bespoke process is that will need to be conducted every time there's going to be a boy board-appointed trustee uh process. But yeah, I mean, I I wouldn't see why that should share fate with either the NOMCOM or the elections committee.
Uh so Andrew, did you defer to Alona?
Alona.
All right, we're gonna play musical chairs here. So I I mean, the 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 one thing that I will notice here is that it it's actually really quite important that we have some of these functions. And and so I sort of don't care whether we move it to the NOMCOM or have it in the governance committee, although I I think the point about non-trustees being involved in that is pretty important. Um but some of this stuff is like really genuinely required by the IRS and we're not doing it now. So or we are doing it, but we're doing it somewhat informally, I think is is a better way to put that. Um uh so, you know, I would like this to show up in some committee's charter, just for the obvious reason that it 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 improves our documentation of the processes that we're actually undergoing.
George? George?
Well, one other alternative, which I don't particularly like, uh it's imperfect, is to uh uh leave the charter the way it's been recommended and then have the anybody who's running for the board, it would be me in this case this year, uh since I'm a member of the governance committee, uh to recuse myself uh in whenever this is discussed. That that's really sloppy and uh I would say, having chaired the NOMCOM twice, uh I think a multi-stage process in the NOMCOM with board members only and then expanding to include non-board members, as is required by the charter, uh would would work.
Mohammed?
I think I would defer because John has already said what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Laura?
Drifting through mute button. Yeah, I think there's there's two things to me here. One is, you know, we we don't want to have this, I think it's already difficult to get a sufficient number of people participating on all of the committees. So if anything we have that sort of constrains membership further seems like a bad thing. Um I don't actually care whether responsibility for this recruitment lies, but I think we should be crystal clear about where it is and make sure that it's like clearly demarked. Um that that seems pretty important.
Uh so I'm gonna ask for a couple of straw pulls and and just this is just as a a way of sensing how people are are thinking about this. And the three questions I'm gonna ask are uh is anybody opposed to this language appearing in some committee charter? Uh and and we'll we'll take that as then a question that will inform the second one. Which is, does anybody believe that if it's in the governance committee charter, this excludes uh candidates from the governance committee? And then the third will be, if if we did go to a two-stage nominations committee charter, does anybody have concerns about that? And so those don't necessarily I I mean, I I realize they sort of presume what the answers are and my apologies for that, but I i- if the first one comes out differently, we can always change the other two. Uh so first, is there anybody
Clarify the third one, though.
Uh so so the 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 third one is, should we move this to the nominations committee? Uh would anybody object to then also moving the nominations committee to a two-stage membership, so that it starts with just
As opposed to the option that Charles suggested, which is to modify the language here on the governance committee that then would sort of send it on to the nominations committee?
I thought that that
Well, well, one one option might be to change the language slightly and Alona, Alona, maybe you can help me make sure it's okay. Like, oh, it uh the the second last point on put on two is to oversee board succession planning and make recommendation to the board regarding uh com- committee composition and 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 officer role. Maybe change that to include the third, that's the last point to say that, you know, oversee oversee board succession planning uh in uh making recommendation to the board regarding the, well, just include that. So well, just it basically to 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 eliminate the last point, to make it So, well, just it basically to, to, to eliminate the last point, to make it a less directly talking about identifying and recommend, yes, recommending specific candidate. Because that, that really seemed to be a little bit, yeah, unfortunately, we didn't have a joint meeting, maybe we should have at the time with the NOMCOM. Otherwise, that particular overlap might have been cited.
So I think the point George was making about recusal comes in there, right? So if you're part of the governance committee and the governance committee is in essence the one that's writing the job description for the year, then you, you, you functionally, if you're a candidate, have to recuse from that. So that's, that's another possibility, maybe a little bit sloppier, but it's.
That's another possibility, which is to, you know, keep it as it is, but having the possible candidate trustee to recuse themselves.
So I think none of the candidate trustees in the governance committee can be candidates for board-appointed seats, right? Because they're already seated and they're going for election through the existing process. So there's a, there, there really are two different processes running here that are one, one, one runs at a different cycle than the other. So I think we're, we're okay there. But let me go back to the first question. Does anybody object to having this, approximately this language appear somewhere in the committee charters? Do we agree that this needs to be added for clarity to somebody's plate?
So very quickly, what's the this?
Oh, sure. Going, going back to the red line here, in the proposed resolution, the red line, starting at board and committee composition and succession planning and running through identify, recruit and recommend candidates for board membership for the board-appointed trustee position. Thanks. Okay. Does anybody object to us finding a place in the committee charters to, to include substantially this language? Any just straw poll issues with that that people want to raise at this time? Alona, you're going to read, this is your language.
No, no, I was just going to say though, that the first bullet point and the second bullet point is what the governance committee is supposed to do right now, because that's essentially the guideline, the.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get to figuring out the split later.
I, I guess when you put it, any committee, this language, any committee? Yeah, okay, because if there are bespoke committees that are formed in order to do like these board appointments asynchronously from everything else, of course, I'm okay with that language being in their scope. It is their job to identify, recruit and recommend candidates for board membership. But like, I, I don't think there's some standing committee that should have this power or that makes sense to.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you to, to expand on that a little bit.
I mean, in how, under what circumstances do we believe we are going to invoke the power to appoint, yeah, have board-appointed trustees? Do we think that that is power we're going to invoke monthly? Right, we're going to invoke that in an as-needed basis. And I would be perfectly okay with constituting committees for that purpose that would have this mandate at such a time as that is required. Rather than having this be like a standing responsibility of, you know, all the things above that. It's, it's only that last bullet that identify, recruit and recommend candidates for board membership part that is making me push back on that.
Yeah, I, I think the point is, is that board-appointed trustee positions are not currently a responsibility of the NOMCOM. So it has to be a responsibility of somebody. It either has to be, you know, entirely taken up by the board itself or recommended by, let's say, the governance committee. Or if we want to change the responsibility of the NOMCOM to take over that responsibility there as well, but somebody has to do it.
Okay, so I have Barry, George and Andrew and then Louis.
So I think what, if I interpret John's comment correctly, what I, what it sounds like he wants, and I think I agree with him, is so the board takes it up and says, we have a need for this now and constitutes a committee to deal with it. And that, that's, I don't object to putting it in the governance committee or the nominating committee, but I think John's approach is probably best of the bunch.
Because it's creating contamination that caused this whole chain of argument about, well, then, you know, there's a conflict of interest, everybody who is on the governance committee for this, right? That, that's why I'm pushing back.
So it, do you need to make a comment now or do you want to get in queue?
Yeah, just about.
Then you need to, Mike?
Yeah, it's just about that point because the board-appointed trustee position is not going to be in conflict with anybody running for reelection.
Right.
Right? Because you all have elected some, or selected somebody to serve on the board now. She's going to start at the AGM in June. So her term is going to be down in three years and that's going to be nobody who's going to be running for reelection then for that position is going to be somebody else. So I don't see the conflict here between the NOMCOM and the governance committee.
So I have George, Andrew, Luis, Victor.
I'm going to pass. I don't want to add to the confusion.
Andrew, do you want to add to the confusion?
That's my middle name. My middle name is getting longer every time. The, the thing that is nice about this, to, to respond directly to John's concern, is that it then identifies the place that this is going to happen, if it's going to happen at all. What if instead of, instead of, instead of making this smaller or removing it, what about making it larger so that the governance committee is actually responsible for, for recommending that this be exercised and then responsible for finding the candidate and so forth? So, so in any given year, you, the, the governance committee says, hey, wait a minute, we've like declined in diversity, therefore we need to, or, you know, it's not the same or whatever, therefore you need to, you need to exercise this thing. And then the board says, okay, yes. And then the committee says, okay, we're going to go and do this. Would that satisfy your, your concern about this?
Yes.
Okay.
Isn't that what we?
So wait, we have Luis, Victor and now Pepper.
Okay, the, from my point of view, the board-appointed positions are something that happens not on a regular basis. Yes, it's something extraordinary and the NOMCOM and the elections committee, they, we work in the regular basis. It's just, so I agree that the, the, this process, this extraordinary process should be residing in the governance committee as the, it's going to be something that is not regular, not normal, not under the established rules. Yes, so it needs another set of rules, which should be similar to the other ones. Thank you.
Okay, so good. Victor, Pepper and me and Mohammed.
Okay, so two points. One, I guess to Alona, the one challenge might be from that position that you'd raised is that one might assume that there might be an advantage of someone who's board-appointed to some future elected position, right? I'm not saying that exists, but it could be construed as that. So, but I don't see that as a huge issue, but one could bring that argument in the future, right? So person was selected, now later on, they might have some advantage position. I'm not sure that's a bad thing or not, I'm just saying that someone could bring that up. But I think to the point that Andrew raised, I think that the way it was worded might help because if you have it written as, one committee does have responsibility to flag it to be done, but you require board agreement to then exercise it. And then you go off and do the work. It removes the potential, the, the issue. It, it helps establish that there is a known way to do it on an ongoing basis, right? Like you, you know, the governance committee flags it. However, the board has to agree so that, that, that committee can't just go off and start to do something without board. Anyway, those are my two points.
Pepper and, and.
I agree with what Victor said, and I think Andrew, what you just, what you said describes what we've done. That's all we, that's what we did. That's it. Which is great, create a special committee, but, but if in fact, we had done that as part of, within the governance committee.
Right, that, that, that's what I was trying to suggest.
And I think that that actually does solve the problem. And I, so I'm agreeing with what you just articulated because it then creates a process, if needed, going to, you know, the point that this is extraordinary, right?
Mohammed, then Alona, then me.
I think also that we, we need to document this somewhere and governance committee seems to be the appropriate place. What if we say in two years' time, the, the governance committee suggests to the board that whether we, are we meeting the diversity requirements that we, we have, we need to increase it? So in two years' time, the governance committee can suggest to the board that what should this board do, whether it should, it, it needs to appoint a member or not. But I think it should reside within the governance committee, having some language that it needs to fulfill some diversity requirements or something like that.
Alona?
I think I was just going to respond back, I think, to Victor's point about whether, where it resides. But at the end of the day, the board is going to either appoint or not appoint that trustee by two thirds. So it's still, the power isn't with the, within this board. It's just the question is which, who is doing the legwork? Who's going to go and look for the candidate? And again, because this has not happened before, this was a, a special setup committee, but really the function lives within the governance committee. I would say you are on so many committees, it's a small board, it's a volunteer board, there's so much work already that you're all doing, that to then set up yet another committee and not have the charter or not have, you know, this was a lot of work on all of you and on us to try and get this candidate identified and then appointed, that I think have some kind of strategy and have it live within the governance committee where it's supposed to live makes perfect sense.
Supposed to live. Many of us don't live where we're supposed to live. I warn you of that right now. I, I would like to ask the, the, the governance committee for forbearance to, to suggest two things. One, I think there's some parts of this which are clearly meant to apply to ongoing operation, how it works every year, especially that they're meant to apply in years where there is no external, when, when there's no board appointment. And there are some parts of this which are specific to the years where there is a board appointment. So I would like to ask if the governance committee would consider rephrasing this so that these are in two different areas of the, of the charter? So it's a little bit clearer which ones are meant to apply constantly and which ones are specific? Because I think some of the concerns I'm having, it sounds like are around sections that other people believe are for this extraordinary measure. If that's acceptable, I would then like the committee to make a specific recommendation as to whether the implication is that people who are candidates are eligible to serve on the governance committee or not. Because I think we need to be crystal clear about that as we evaluate the charter because it will tell us where things fall or not. And I think part of my reason for that actually goes back to the point about how we did this recruitment process. As you'll recall, we didn't actually run an open call and get candidates. We did a recruiting process. We had a, the, the special committee went, developed what it wanted and maybe the governance committee would be the one that does this in the future, but then went with the recruiter, found somebody and we basically said, everybody has to agree on who this is because we're not going to be very happy if it comes back into the, the final board and board members are like, no, this isn't the person we want because we would have really burned a very serious bridge to do that. And what we did to avoid that is to say, everybody who wants to be on the recruitment committee can join it. So if, if, if you are either joining the recruitment committee or you are committing to hold your peace, and that worked well. We can't do the same thing with the governance committee and say, because there might be at some point in the future, a recruitment here, if you want to have a, a piece of that pie, you got to join the governance committee at the beginning of the year because then we're going to end up with a governance committee that in fact then has everybody on it who might ever want to have a piece of that pie. So I think what I, I feel like we need here is a little bit more clarity on which pieces of this apply only to the, the, the special case recruitments and which don't. And a direct consideration from the governance committee about whether they think this is disqualifying for candidates or not. And, and I think that would, that would help us get to the next stage of this. Does that make sense?
I, I just want to make sure you, you're talking about the conflict of the person who might be a candidate for the board-appointed trustee position?
No, I'm talking about the fact that this, as it reads now, each year, the board matrix is evaluated, each, each year, use the board matrix to evaluate the board's current composition and recommend an ideal candidate profile to inform the nominations committee work and other board recruitment activities. So because that's writing the board description and it means basically, ultimately, this is, might end up saying, you know, we currently have four different lawyers on the board, three of whom are, are, are up for review, we only need two. That, that's something that if you're one of the other two lawyers or even any of the four, you might not want to be part of the committee that decided that. Unless you're, you yourself are tired of lawyers, which I hear happens among lawyers pretty frequently. But I think that means that we need clarity for the, even for the parts that are ongoing operations and not these special purposes about whether or not this is disqualifying to potential candidates. Pepper, you had a question?
Yeah, in, in looking at the specific language, it, it makes an assumption that there's a problem. And so I guess, Charles, the question is on the language, you know, you know, whether remedy is even needed before, and if there, if not, then do you need an ideal candidate?
So Alona is raising her hands to say, it could mean we want exactly what we've already got. Alona?
I wanted to say that you need as many lawyers as you can get. Hey, no. No, but what I was going to say actually, in response to Ted's point, or actually, I'll start with you, Pepper. The governance committee is doing that already. The ideal candidate, and maybe ideal is what bothers people, but the candidate is what the guidelines are supposed to be all about from the governance committee going down to the NOMCOM. Here's the guidelines and here's what we're looking for this year and here's our board composition this year and this is what, you know, you need. So that's, it's just basically saying, we'll add on another layer, which is the board matrix. And to answer Ted's concern, it's not about, hey, we have this many we don't need anymore. It's more about, okay, lawyers check, we also need policy, we also need this. And so it's, it's basically adding rather than subtracting. So it's not saying we don't need anymore. What we're saying is this is what we need for the following year because somebody else may not be running because they, they, you know, they're, they're at their sixth year. So we're losing policy person on the board, right? So it's not, we don't need anymore, it's we need more of this, if that makes sense.
Thank you for that clarification. I, I will say that the way it currently works, I, I think we've talked about this, is a bit more ad hoc and I think it's much more idealized. You know, we, we describe what the ideal board candidate looks like, some, similar to what we say to the PIR board, right? When we're, we're recruiting for that. We put out all of the different things that might be valuable in a board member and then it's up to the NOMCOM to pick among them based on its understanding of what might be missing in the existing PIR board or in the board after people stepping down, et cetera. So this is, this is systematizing it in a way that I think moves it into something where there's a potential conflict if you are a candidate because you're functionally writing your own job description. And that's, that's the concern I'm raising for why this might or might not require either a recusal or simply not having those people serve on the committee. And that's what I'm hoping the governance committee will give its perspective on, as a, as a follow-on. Andrew?
So the, the, what we are currently doing, both with the NOMCOM and in fact with the community, is identifying a sort of general, you know, set of, of functions that we want within the, within the board, but we're not identifying currently to the NOMCOM or I think the NOMCOM knows it implicitly. But I don't think we're identifying to the community. Look, these are the things that are either shifting or important considerations in making decisions this year. And that is a weakness in our current governance structure that would be an improvement if, if we, you know, sort of identify to the community, okay, these are the, like, these are the skills that we're looking to make sure we have, either continue to have or, you know, amend the, the board in the, in the coming year because these are some things that we would like to have within the board. And I think that that is the, that is a sort of signal weakness of the current process that this is intended to, to, to address. And so then the question is, and I think the question you're posing, and I think this is a question that the, the committee needs to work on, I don't think we need to resolve it right now. But the question is whether that. But the question is whether that is sort of presumptively putting the finger on the scales for somebody who either has or does not have those, those skills if they, if they join the governance committee. I, I, I just will note that, you know, there's a difference between saying, this is a skill that needs to appear within this collection of people. And, you know, I am the person who has the skill and therefore, which is very much more like on the NOM, in the nominations committee where you've definitely got, you know, candidates that you're recommending rather than a set of skills. So I, I want us to be clear about that. But the, the, the central point here is in fact to inject into this discussion, into the, into the selection, the ability to say, look, these are specific skills that actually are, are, are things that are currently necessary, given the selections that are coming up. And I, I think that that is something that would actually be an improvement to our processes.
So I think based on the straw poll earlier, there's nobody in the board who objected to having it somewhere in our processes. The question is how to get that done. And I think the, a slightly different way to rephrase what you just said is to the extent that this exists now, it's in the nominations committee interacting between the advice they get and the specific candidates. We're moving it back because the nominations committee is sort of a delegate of the governance committee to some degree. We're moving it back into the governance committee by this. And I think the, the board may need to figure out if by moving it back into the governance committee, we're moving that bar for conflict of interest into the governance committee or not. If, if we move it into the governance committee, we have to answer that, that question. If we, if we say instead, no, we want this to go into the nominations committee and we're going to delegate it to the nominations committee, maintaining this matrix, et cetera, then we have to deal with the fact that the nominations committee is currently a, a joint committee between board members and non-board members. And we'd have to work that through. Either one is possible. We just have to figure out where, where we want to do it. And I think there's, there's broad agreement in the, in the board that we want to do it. It's just a question of how do we do it in a way that doesn't tire hands in some other aspect of committee operations? So you've gotten a lot more conversation than I think.
Yes, yes. But, but just a quick point. I, I, my first reaction is that it's probably better to keep it in the governance committee because of the fact that it's all trustees. And if there's any potential conflict, you know, the trustee can be refused and so on, rather than the NOMCON because you would have a lot of people who might potentially be interested in joining the NOMCON because of that potential conflict. So, but anyway, we can take it back to the committee to further discuss it and come up with a better wording and so on and come back to the.
That'd be great. And if you just have, what I would, speaking personally, not as chair, I think would be very valuable if you would, if you'd make a call within the governance committee about whether you think you need to exclude, ask people to recuse, or there is no conflict because you're going to rewrite it in a way to write the conflict out. That would be really useful. Thank you.
I think that's, that's the report and the discussion on the, on the, on the, on the, on the chart, on the, yeah, the charter. The charter review, I think, I think that's the whole purpose. I think we got a lot of good responses and, and discussion from the trustees to go back to the committee to finish the work.
Okay. And, and given the, the, the discussion, I'm not going to bring the charter resolution to a vote. The next item of business is on the, the comp committee. The compensation committee did most of its work in July and, sorry, January and early February doing the annual performance room of the CEO. This has been documented in, in approved minutes by the committee, but just to review it. The committee awarded Andrew Sullivan a base performance score of 77.74. And we reviewed the disqualified persons reports from Willis Towers, Towers Watson, giving the total remuneration plans for the executives and we agreed that they were reasonable for, for say Sally and Rinalia, which were the ones that were brought to us. And we awarded corresponding variable performance for Sally at 94, at say at 94, at Rinalia at 91. And in Lona, who although not a disqualified person, went through the same process at 94. So those were all resolved and done in, in the, in that timeframe. And the, sorry, that was the February 6th meeting and then the minutes were approved by EVO. Are there any questions about those results? The other item of business for this is there is a, a proposed change to the compensation committee charter, the red line of which you will also find in the board effect. And the change is to call out the general managers who were not called out before. And, yeah, they were called managing directors before. Sorry, and. Sorry, they, they were. Yeah, sorry. They were not included before. So one of the things it says is annually obtained and review market data with respect to the compensation and benefits provided by comparable organizations for comparable services to those provided by the foundations managing director and executive director and for similarly the managing director for the Internet Society. So basically this puts onto the plate of the, of the compensation committee, the, those reviews. Are there any questions about that change to the charter? Okay. There is a proposed resolution for this, which reads, whereas as part of its annual work plan, the compensation committee reviewed its charter and revised it to reflect updated titles. Whereas the amended and restated bylaws of the Internet Society, Article II Section requires the Board of Trustees to approve committee charters. Resolve the compensation committee charter as presented is approved. Is there any discussion? With those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, that passes. Thank you very much. I think the next bit is the finance committee report. Laura?
Hi. You'll actually find the finance committee report in the second part of the meeting because I put the closed and open parts really together, but I'll talk about the open part first. Which is, the finance committee did several things this quarter. One of the things was to review the pre-order financial results, which we'll talk about after Say has presented those. The other thing that's sort of significant was that we recently received a briefing from Goldman Sachs about the market conditions and outlook. So I think that's worth mentioning because we had a very good discussion about the collapse of some notable banks recently, particularly Silicon Valley Bank and Signature Banks and what that means for the society. And there's not sort of a direct impact on the society's finances, which is good, obviously. But there is follow-up work for staff, you know, reviewing our banking to consider, you know, and not having all the varies in one basket and training staff on things like dealing with changing vendor bank details and avoiding fraud in those situations and so on. That was useful. I think it's, um, it's worth us continuing to pay attention to that because it does affect market conditions. Secondary thing is finance and legal teams have been working with the Connected Giving Foundation to assist with managing ISOC financial reserves. And that is actually particularly notable because it should positively affect the public support test and help to keep us within the appropriate window. Third thing, the finance team of the society has been working pretty hard over the last few months to implement the reallocation strategy. And the one thing I wanted to point out to you is that, you know, this set of financial results pre-audit, and when we see them finally, you know, at the AGM, are going to look pretty different from what we see this time next year. So just, you know, when you get to this time next year, don't try and directly compare them because obviously we'll have moved a bunch of things around. And sometimes people get upset about that because it breaks trend lines and so on, but this is for such a good reason that it doesn't really matter. We just have to live with. So generally speaking, I know it's been a lot of work for Say and the team. So the many officers, thanks to Say and the rest of the team for their excellent work on this to date. I will come back and talk about committee's commentary on the pre-audit financial results in the second part of the meeting. That's all. Any questions, comments, discussion?
Okay, I think they're probably waiting for the second half of the report to have.
Maybe not. Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Luis, the audit committee report.
Yes, as, as you know, the season for the audit is going to start as we, we, finance and management has submitted the results of last year to the, to be reviewed by the external auditor. The first, first impression of the external auditing firm video is that the things are clean. Yes, everything looks in order. We are expecting the first report by the end of April. So after that, we will have the results or the first results of audit. Yes, this is just a preliminary report. They sent us something that is called the audit planning for the year ended on December the 31st of 2022. And here in this calendar, they, they, they say us that the, the scope in this audit is going to include fraud risk, internal control over financial reporting, taxes and related disclosures, review of information systems, investment and related disclosures, accurate and timely capture of expenses, evaluation of related party relationship and transactions. And this has brought our attention because they're putting emphasis on cybersecurity. And, okay, we say we are the Internet Society, so there shouldn't be any problem with cybersecurity. But maybe we should think about it and review our cybersecurity practices. From the audit point of view, cybersecurity is seen as a risk to the organization and their finance. Yes. So the, that's why I brought it to the attention of the, the rest of the committee. Just the calendar, as, as I was explaining, by the end of April, the field work is finished. And then we'll have the reports in May. And in May, there will be another meeting with the audit committee. And by September, we will be ready to prepare our 990 form, which finally will be presented in October by the, by the audit committee. And that's the plan for the year. I'm very happy to answer any question or comment.
No, I, I don't know that actually Laura and I ever mentioned this to the board. I know we told the senior staff, there was actually an attempt to spearfish Laura back in, in June of last year. Somebody pretending to be me tried to get in touch with her to get her to pay something for the ISOC foundation. And we told Andrew and Kevin about it so the senior staff were aware of it. And, and obviously, somebody pretending to be me trying to get Laura to pay something wasn't going to work very well anyway. But it was, it is definitely something to be aware of that there, there are fishing attempts and spearfishing attempts. And I suspect that one was particularly timed because we just announced the, the new officers election right after the AGM so that they may have assumed that one or both of us was new to the role or not well coordinated. So it is definitely something we need to pay attention to. Right. I think that brings us to the end of the open to observer section for now. Is that correct?